Thanks, everybody, for coming at six oh two Wednesday, March tenth, twenty twenty one, Sunnaby Middle High School Inumazium. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a slightly unusual meeting in that we have to reorganize the board. Then we do roll call, pledge of allegiance and the like. So our first duty at hand, we need to have a chair, a vice chair, and we need to have board members sign up for capital improvement, finance, negotiations, policy committees, and we will then commence. So somebody want to start the motions and we can respond positively or negatively with body language on how we feel with that?
I make a motion to make Jesse, the chair of the school board.
I'll second that motion.
Right out of the gate with that. Okay, any discussion? All right.
I will help my young, no other nominations.
Yeah, I didn't have to say any discussions because I weren't in the meeting. That's fine. Okay, I'm happy to do that for you. I guess we should keep it formalized. All in favor of my being the chair for this year, say aye.
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 Great, now I'm up though. Who's the vice chair?
I'd like to make a motion to have Scott Ritzman be the vice chair.
Thanks, Fred.
I will second that motion.
Seconded by, all right. No more discussion needed, apparently. All in favor of Scott as vice chair for the coming year, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have Carrie and Andy back. So I'll make a motion that Carrie and Andy continue forward on the capital improvement subcommittee. Can I get a second?
I'll second your motion.
Okay, seconded by Scott. Any commentary or pushback? Okay, all in favor of Carrie and Andy as the capital improvements, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Finance was Eddie Anderson, Scott Ritzman with Carrie and I as alternates as needed. You guys want to make any change there? Do you want to carry forward in the roles you have? All right, so you want a motion on that, Scott?
I'll make a motion then we proceed as is.
Okay.
With finance.
I'm hoping later when we have discussions, there's actually discussions, so all in favor of leaving that as is, say aye, please.
Aye.
To clarify for people listening, Ed and Scott are the finance committee. For negotiations, what do you guys think?
Sorry. Again, I think I'll nominate Ed to take the lead on it. He did a fine job three years ago and created a win-win, and I'll nominate Carrie to be in there as well if she would like.
Yeah.
And he can be the alternate.
Sure. The, I think the two of you have the most relevant experience for that, and I think that sounds good to me. So all in favor of the teacher contract negotiations?
I'll second it personally, right?
Yep. Sorry, I got a tip there. Second, all in favor for Ed and Carrie to be the negotiations from the school board, please say aye.
Aye.
Mark Schumey. Policy, I'm going to nominate Scott Ritzman. I think if you compare our policy work since he's been on the board to any other school board in New Hampshire, I'm not saying people like fight in a way to figure this out, but I think that we would probably be an exemplary example, and it's Scott's fault. So I would like him to be the lead on the policy again. And then how about nominate Ed to be the other on that because of his experience as well. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, seconded by Carrie. All in favor of Scott from the Ed and Andy Policy Subcommittee, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, I don't think we need the last. That's it. All right, so it's very different for people with our huge attendance. It's a little different doing that when you have a board turnover, which just happened that Scott was reelected and the other four of us were in up for election this year, so that's a much simpler process.
Well, I would just add too, you know, I think in the last six months in particular, I think as a group, we've really clicked. Everybody has found their lane and their voice, and so, you know, even though we kind of went through that pretty quickly, I feel like collectively as a group, it's come together really well, so, you know, don't fix what's not broken.
Yeah, I think that's good. Any other comments from the gang? Russ? Nothing? Okay, so now we can start a little more familiar meeting format. Would you, Kelly, kick us off? Roll call, please.
Kelly Russell, business secretary.
Russ Holden, superintendent.
Testa Tower School Board.
Scott Ritzman, school board.
Andy Nichols, school board.
Carrie McCall, class school board.
Ed Anderson, school board.
Sean Moynihan, principal, Sunnaby Middle High School.
Walter Harrison, principal of Sunnaby Elementary School. Great, thank you. We rise for our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we are going to jump into approval of the February third, twenty twenty one school board meeting. Can I get a motion approval notice, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February third, twenty twenty one school board meeting.
Seconded by?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion, direction, commentary? Fairly long notice from now. Talk to them on that. I didn't see any additions or corrections. Okay, no discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes of February third, twenty twenty one school board meeting, Ed Ritzman, please say aye.
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 All right, moving on. Gender review. Do you board members have anything they want to add?
Russ, you did have a cross comment on which we wanted.
Yeah, I brought the one, the original one from Senator Higginson. Speaking of information seems appropriate, so I'll add the letter from Senator. I didn't know that, because you guys are good. All right, moving on. Public forum in accordance to policy D E D H. You got three minutes to speak your opinion. Ed is the timekeeper. You got an o'clock ready? Mindy, please introduce yourself, and you have the board.
Can I have my mask off?
If everyone's at their spot or your space, so that CDC would be happy to have our masks off if people want to.
Don't count that as part of my time, Ed.
Yeah, we're ready, set, now.
Okay, three minutes. I'm Mindy Abbott, I'm a graduate of, and I just wanted to say, Jesse, Scott, Andy, Carrie, Ed, in a lot of ways, I have been where you are with our efforts to reach the library some years back. And I don't want to project my own experience on you, but like, it's okay to be like, not to say any reprimishing, but it's okay to be in a bad place, it's okay to be in a frustrated place. I personally swamped around for a few days and was like, nobody likes me, what am I doing with my life? I just need to constantly eat ice cream. But it passed, it passed. And I want to just, I think that probably based on my own experience, you're going to hear a lot of, oh, you know what if you had just done, or the one problem was, or, oh, jeez, I'm sorry, I got in a hat in the day, I'm sorry I didn't turn up to full. There's going to be a lot of noise, and I just think that unfortunately, you as a board, you've been here before, and what I see when I look at you is a board that's capable of filtering through the noise, letting some of the maybe really well-intentioned feedback sort of filter through and find the real gems. And I just wanted you to know that I really believe that you're capable of that, and when you're done with your ice cream eating phase or whatever your equivalent is, I think you probably take an asset inventory. I hope you will, and I think there's a lot of good news. As a person in her professional life who works, most of her colleagues work for boards, I can tell you that a functioning board, a group of people who function as one voice, one intent, is a really positive thing. It's a really, and it's not always the case, and I think that you have that, and that's a real asset. I think that you have an asset in your superintendent, I think you have an asset in your teaching staff, in the whole staff. I think you have an asset in your director of facilities. So I think there's a lot of good news, and I just want to let you know, I have every faith that you're going to be able to filter through as you have in the past and find the path forward. So I just wanted to let you know that, I don't have very much time, Ed. Also, I just want to say, no disrespect, I'm not going to stay for the rest of the meeting, I'm going to go home and suffer with my son, but I just want to come here tonight and say that to all of you. And I hope that when you're considering your assets, you will consider me on that list. I want to be an asset to all of you. I admit that I have held back a little bit because of the job that I have in this camp. I actually, I think the word is out. So I want to let you know that you can count me as an asset to you as well, if you think that I would be unhelpful, but I'll be moving forward, so.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, for anybody who's watching or anyone in attendance, if you want to come and speak to the first public meeting, go home and be with your family, then that is a perfectly respectable thing to do. We get to hear your voice, and your family gets time to do so. Going forward, to hear more voices, that's wonderful, so thank you, Mindy. Other folks want to speak? Chris, introduce yourselves to everyone near you.
Chris Whitehouse, you know, the library raised a lot of money for projects, we tried to build a new library, and I think that that would be the idea, I brought it up a month ago, but this time I'm going to be a little more committed about it, so if the board would start a fund, allows people to donate money to it, although the first thousand dollars, in check in the pocket, I'll write it to you right now if you're willing to start that fund. I'll start it for you. Thousand dollar donation, you start, capital improvement fund for Sunday schools.
Yeah, I appreciate you being here and speaking, and I appreciate your offer, and I wrote it down as a discussion point for the board, so this is what public comment is all about. So thank you very much, and thank you for your offer and going of the first public comments after our voting day, this is great. Other voices, please. You have another time at the end of the meeting if you prefer that. Okay, awesome. That's why I worked so hard to have this policy. Let's move right into the elementary school update. Mr. Houston, please.
Well, as always, we have a very busy moment. Grace flows this Friday, report cards go out next week. Valentine's Day, I know this seems like it was a long time away, but it wasn't. This year, we continue to work against the seniors in town, and we received many thank yous, and actually that became part of our morning message when we read the thank you notes from the seniors in our town. The kids, I think, really appreciated it, glad to see handwritten notes and hearing from all the people saying thank you for their efforts. We followed COVID restrictions, our protocols, and we were able to do that further up. We had a Valentine's Day celebration, was also our hundredth day of celebration, we're now on day one hundred and fourteen. And the food service departments, they were awesome again. They provided heart-shaped cookie sandwiches for the kids and made cream puffs for the staff, so we were very appreciative of that. Dare started this week, and in the past, Dare was a twelve-week, a ten-week course in that they met once a week with the fifth graders. Not knowing what the future held for us, we decided this year we're actually doing ten daily lessons, so the children are having their Dare lesson every single day for a half hour. It's being, I want to say televised or doing it over Zoom, and then hopefully in the spring we'll do our big celebration, do some sort of a graduation and still have the kids meet with the eleventh graders like they've done in the past, but this way it'll be two weeks, and then in case anything were to happen, Dare is taken care of. We're doing a reading challenge this month for the month. We are creating rainbow chains to wrap the school around in. Each link, if you come down to the school or have a chance to walk through, you'll see that each link goes around and represents a person who read for twenty minutes a night, so we have many links going around. Physical activities, this week, Mrs. Cruz is out for the week, and she was so disappointed because she wanted to take the children snowshoeing. Well, Mr. Dalton is filling in and is taking them snowshoeing because we couldn't use the gym yesterday, so it's been a fun time to be able to get outside and, what a week ago of snowshoeing, so they've been very appreciative. And the last thing I just want to share, we did an activity as a staff last week at our staff meeting, in which I gave the staff a little paper lemon shake, and their task was to write on one side of the paper something that was a lemon, something that was a challenge, something that was a problem, something that they went into this year going, I don't know how I'm going to be able to do X, Y, and Z, this is really an obstacle. And so they wrote that on one side of the lemon, and then on the other side, they had to turn, talk about how they turned around and made lemonade out of it. What was the positive experience that came out of that? And it was so inspirational to hear the staff and to read their stories of how they were so disappointed they weren't going to be able to do whatever it was, and yet how they turned that around and turned it and made it something wonderful. So we have a little mobile that ends up in the staff room so people can read the things that their staff, their colleagues had made lemons into lemonade, so I just wanted to share that with you. That was a really, it was a fun way to find out that this was not a disastrous year, there was a lot of good things that came out of it, so that's what's happening at the elementary school.
Awesome, thank you. Go back to follow. Sean Moynihan, want to share?
Yeah, absolutely. This month is usually an interesting one in a typical year because we're kind of between seasons now, and so we've got all kinds of activities, and this is when field trips go and all kinds of things like that, so that's not the case this year. But we're still trying to keep things with a sense of normalcy, so a couple of things that are exciting is the spring play is almost at that time, the kids are doing their rehearsals, and we're pretty excited that it looks like we're going to be able to have a couple of people come in for each student to do that, so we're working on the seating there. You know, Mrs. Parsons, our senior project advisor, we usually have two, she's done it solo this year, and just submitted a really good plan that we are going to do senior project presentation night is the hope that we're going to do that. We certainly won't have the full hallways like we typically do. However, we have a plan that we're pretty happy where a certain number of people will be able to see each of those events. We're going to break it down into four different sessions this year. We're still working some details out, but again, we're starting to feel like we're on the edge of a little more normalcy, which is good, trying to keep some of those traditions that are so important to the kids. You know, winter sports ended, we would have liked it to have been better, but a huge accomplishment is that we did not have to pause it. You know, a lot of schools had to pause at different times, and we were able to have complete season. Sometimes we had to miss a game because somebody else had to pause, but again, appreciate the faith that the board had that we could provide a valid experience for the kids, and I think we did that. And then for the juniors, SATs are coming up, so some things never change, we still have to do that. So those are the things that are going on. Again, it's different because again, we're used to this kind of neat field trip time, and we haven't been able to do some, we've been able to do the hiking through the outer club and things along those lines, but some things that we typically do, we're just not able to, and hopefully we can next year.
Very nice, thanks. Yeah, it's amazing with the winter sports that there were no pauses in Sunnaby, that's remarkable. I gave you a hard time a few months ago, even the notion of it, and I acknowledge that, and I'm glad that you can laugh at me in this moment.
I told you we'd get it right, right? We got it right.
Yeah, just hearing from families, how much it meant to give, even helping to be able to open up the spacing in the gym for families to watch, just so the parents could have some privacy, was awesome, let alone their joy for their kids. It was some comments, it was just really nice to be in a gym and hear sneakers squeak and have a little bit of normal for a while, so I think it was a broader community impact that was really cool to see and hear people talk about and light up. So thank you for what it took quietly behind the scenes to keep everybody safe and make that happen. Very appreciative of that.
I think we should also acknowledge Mr. Fred and Mr. Reed for their efforts to announce and Zoom all the games for all those that couldn't watch.
Yes.
I mean, they made, they've got a fan base in various different states, countries, like with everybody they've got to watch, and they're hoping that that'll continue.
Mr. Fred keeps doing the Zoom, we may never get another fan of the game anymore. That might be one negative.
So I think we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge that contribution that he gave to keep it.
I gave a general, I definitely defer Mr. Fred and Mr. Reed for that. You know, I think it would have moved here for the schools and then played basketball, and I really, I mean, it was fine to go to the games, but I mostly went to watch Mr. Fred yell at the kids. The idea that that's going global is really funny and a little frightening, but people didn't, isn't it? It's a unique culture in Sunnaby where you can have something that I pulled off by everybody that was involved. Thank you for as superintendent being able to try that, so that's great. So credit to all who participated. We have a superintendent update taken here.
Sure, thank you. Some great news. We were contacted last week by Greater Sullivan County Health Organization. They have set up vaccination for this coming Friday. We have ninety staff members that have signed up in our in-line starting at three thirty and four o'clock at the Grandin Town Hall to receive their first dose of COVID nineteen vaccination. So we're really excited on that. Little bit of limited information, we know it is a two-shot, the two-shot, one of the two-shot vaccinations, they haven't scheduled the second shot yet, but wish we got out four in the door right off the bat and feel really good that we have a hundred and twenty-two faculty, ninety that have signed up right now, and we have some already that are already fully vaccinated, so feeling really good about what we've done and the ability to continue to keep people safe. We have that, we did have a COVID situation over the weekend as well. Fortunately, it only dealt with a few staff members, we were able to get that contained and under control, feel like again, students and other faculty that haven't been aware that people are safe at this point in time. Legislation, again, I know I sent some things out to the board and administrative team last week on H D four fifty-five, school choice overall. That has gone through one hearing, it is up again, I believe next week, I'll keep you updated. Also, Senate Bill one thirty on the voucher program. There's just a continued onslaught of legislation, more than I have ever seen in my time as superintendent, and I do appreciate the board, you know, understanding what's there and reading and in a way, and we feel the need to, and we're not just continuing to supply the right information, but it really is a very interesting, a very active legislative session right now. I had that conversation yesterday with Winona Tanner, thanked her for her efforts, and also spoke with her right before I came in today. She's giving some testimony regarding towns losing their right to have special meetings in April if there were negotiated things that they could pass or perhaps appropriation offset that they need to make up, say the roof collapsed here in the gym, we need to go find a two million dollars to fix it, but that put us out of sort come June to pay people. We could go to the voters right now and raise and appropriate some money to make sure you could do that. There's legislation to try to take that away from towns that no means to know, you don't get people back in that. So it was great to be able to collaborate with Winona on that as well. And lastly, because I don't ever like to leave money on the table, we do have a policy K C D which allows the board to accept public gifts for naming and donation. Anything over five hundred dollars has to be accepted by the board. What the board can't do though is the board can't fund us. So we have P G O, and I think we have an active member of the P G O here, we also have a booster organization, because they're four O N three Cs, they can actively fund us. The board could accept a gift, but it doesn't necessarily have to go to the intent that that individual gave us that money for. And so I would think a better place to potentially start a fund, and I know I've spoken with P G O, would be looking through the P G O or looking through our Booster Club for that type of fundraising organization. Again, if you want to give me, now give a check to the board for a thousand dollars as a gift, you can accept that, and you have the determination on what to do with that. I think a better avenue might be through those other channels. Just wanted to make sure I didn't leave money on the table.
K C D, I just think it's helpful because it's come up, I appreciate Chris Whitehouse making that offer, gone broad enough last year. It's just so that the community understands, we can accept it and then put it towards whatever the board feels we should do with that thousand dollars. So that's certainly, we're open to that if you do want to write the check, but in the spirit of community and taking good intent that you initiate a meeting with, the Booster Club or the P T O, that has more role that they can actively fundraise if they choose to, and that's the difference. So we can certainly accept it and find lots of uses for a thousand dollars, but I think the spirit of the donation and what's by our policy and what's done in doing it for towns, booster or P T O, and I'm not speaking for either P T O or Booster, but I think there is a lot of potential this year to try to do that. Our first meeting of the year started with a suggestion, so I think it's something, I encourage the board as a chair that we stay firmly in our appropriate swim lane and policy. At the same time, if the P T O, and we're not putting pressure on the one representative, the P T O wants to think about this discussion, and others want to engage the Booster Club, we could potentially outgive towards it. Andy, you've talked about giving, I think a lot of people could give. We could end up with a fair amount of money at the end of the year if, when it comes to going to the voters, I think that's a lovely thing, we just, if it comes to the board, we're happy to spend it as we need it. I think P T O Booster Club would have a, would be a great, appropriate four one, what's this, four one C three?
Four one three C, right?
Yeah, so that's my take. I don't, other comments from the board, any feelings about this?
No, I mean, I'd love it if the P T O or the Booster Club would want to start that because I have people that are ready to donate.
I think it'd be great to take the momentum from a remarkably successful.
And I'd be happy to help.
Yeah, but then, so is that something, I'm putting you on the spot, I'm sorry, just to, you don't have to say anything, but it's odd, just, is that something the P T O can think about? And then you can talk to your group, and then I, we can, who's the best contact on the Booster Club? Booster Club?
Is that Amy right now?
Amy Tuwe.
Okay, so let's take that forward, the good intent, and then see if maybe potentially one of us or Russ, maybe you can talk at the next meeting to say, P T O's game, Booster's game, something like that, does that work for people? Because I don't want to, I don't want to lose a check for a thousand dollars.
As long as it goes to Sunnaby School Capital Improvement, I'll give you a thousand dollars to sign up. I won't be going anywhere.
Okay, awesome, so.
Thank you, Chris.
Updated next meeting, thank you very much, updated next meeting, and then we can have a little bit of a community understanding of the opportunity, and others who do want to volunteer and follow your lead. Does that sound reasonable to you?
Sure.
Perfect.
Great. I just, with the last couple of weeks before voting, I was a little, board can take it, but we need to decide where it goes. The other groups have a little more flex, so I'm glad that this, yeah, this discussion I think we're on to, do you have anything else?
No, I'll go first, thank you, bro.
All right, action items, we have four coaches for spring coaching positions, varsity baseball softball, middle school softball, Dayton softball. Can I get a motion to approve the four coaches for spring?
Make a motion to, oop, make a motion to approve the Sunnaby Middle High School's spring coaching positions.
Great.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion? Thank you Bonnie, Tom, Alyssa, and Kirk for stepping forward as coaches. Kids totally pumped, they didn't practice for this first ones last night, or somebody was on baseball or something, kicked on?
Starting to get the arms warmed up.
Yeah, little by little.
Little by little.
Come throwing. All right, all in favor of approving the coaches as listed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you for helping our students. Informational items, voting review, had quite a day yesterday, quite a few months leading up to it. So I'd like to ask, is the board, each comment their perspective and opinions as individuals, and we can certainly hear from the school leaders and Russ as well if they want to comment. comment. So somebody want to kick us off with your thoughts on voting day and things leading up to it?
I guess I'll start.
I wasn't staring at you in the car, man, I just know it's saying.
You looked out of the way, but I just like.
What are your thoughts?
Well, I guess from the board's perspective, as, you know, the incumbent that got re-elected, I do feel that's a validation of the board as a group, the five of us. We are a strong, well-rounded team and it really takes a group effort. I think that all five of us work really hard on behalf of the school district, the school community, and the taxpayers. And I mean, I feel like the voters have recognized that. I was very encouraged in the last few weeks to get some unsolicited calls of support from some folks. Honestly, I think they were a little disturbed by some of the anti-board rhetoric that was out there and, you know, they wanted to assure me that, you know, they thought that, you know, the five of us were right on with where we were going and what we were doing. And I think it's important for everybody to realize that we're all taxpayers too, the five of us. And sometimes I get the feeling that, you know, a different message is sent out there, but we all work very hard in our day jobs. I don't think any of us are independently wealthy and we all very much value the dollars that we work very hard to earn. So in terms of the financial impact of the things that the district does, we're all in this together. The five of us are just the same in that respect as everybody else. And so I think it's important to remind people of that because I just don't think that some folks realize that for whatever reason. In terms of the building, very, very encouraged about yesterday's outcome. You know, we've gone from forty percent to forty-nine percent to fifty-six percent. We're just over forty, you know, votes short, you know, this year. I do feel that's also validation that the board is listening because it wouldn't be getting to fifty-six percent in a year where there were at least, I think, several hundred less voters this year. And so we made up ground because a lot of people changed their no vote to a yes vote, right? And, you know, I've talked to a couple of those people, I think first and foremost, they think they're very, you know, we're on the right track with the project we put out there this year. And it's a much a better plan and, you know, obviously we'll be talking about it at the company meetings and how maybe it can be fine-tuned, but I think that they feel like we're on the right track or we wouldn't get fifty-six percent. So, you know, my hat is off to our CIP folks who worked, you know, very hard to get us to that point. I do also think, you know, some of them have also gotten tired of, you know, some of the rhetoric and to their credit, you know, they've gone from a no to a yes because, you know, they've had the integrity to separate fact from rhetoric and I think that's really important. You know, moving forward, I feel like I said before, we're all in this together as taxpayers, so my hope is that we'll all be able to put aside political agendas and really consider the safety and security of our young children and the folks that have to work in that building every day because that's what this is really all about. It's not about political agendas, so I think I've said enough.
Well said, thanks. Andy?
Well, obviously excited that our budget passed overwhelmingly and everything else passed. Excited to have Scott back on the board. Disappointed, obviously, that our Article Three didn't pass, but I was very, very excited that we got fifty-six percent because I think, Scott, you're right, I think tells us that we're on the right path. We're not quite exactly where everybody wants to be, but we're really close. And, you know, with that, I'm going to bring that excitement hopefully to our next CIP meeting, which will be next week, and we'll start reviewing and seeing what possible things that we could have done differently and what we'll have to do in the future to make sure it's safe for the kids to go. So, you know, disappointing, but there's a bright, there's a bright light at the end of the talk. It's not a dim one.
Thanks. Gary?
Yep, so I guess at the risk of being repetitive, much of the same sentiments that I'll share, I would say first and foremost, I think I'm really proud of what the board has done as far as how we projected the need for the project to the community, kept it, the messaging really simple, streamlined, factual, and stuck to the message. I think, you know, we kind of left the opinions out of the matter and just kept it very factual, which, which I think resonated with the community. And I agree, I think, I really do think we're on the right path. My fear was, you know, if we didn't land where we landed yesterday, we'd be having a different discussion. So I was really pleased at the outcome that we're almost there. Of course, really happy to have Scott back. I will just kind of second everything you said, I think we've got a good, well-rounded set of skill sets that we bring to the table here for the board. And, yeah, and we've got a work to do in the year ahead, but I think the work is different this time around, our focus will be on things other than the big picture plan, now it's just refinement and packaging and messaging and how do we fine-tune to get the right solution.
Thank you.
You've hit all the points. With all that.
Next time we should start with that.
Well, that being said, overall, very pleased with the outcome of all the voting. You know, one of the things that jumped out at me that other people were saying is, didn't we hear the first time, you know, that the voters do not want the school, we're not listening to the voters, and there was a lot talked about that. And I thought for a minute, interestingly enough, if our President of the United States believed in that, he wouldn't be a president today because he ran three times. You know, the number one position in the United States and he didn't go by that philosophy. I also looked at the town in Newberry and how many times their multimillion dollar project failed for the fire department and the police departments and stuff, and they got that approved through. And I think the importance is, is exactly what has been touched upon, is we are as a group listening. We're doing our best to take many opinions and many of them differ from each other and try to mold that into a situation where everybody can agree. And I think we accomplished that seeing over fifty percent, fifty-six percent, such a small amount of votes compared to the first time this rang through. And then I think for next year, one of the things that I'm saving is a lot of the flyers because unfortunately there was a lot of misinformation in these flyers and I actually feel we can use that to our benefit and pay attention to the points that were misleading and just try to do a better job next year pointing out where that information is false. You know, I saw, we have sent down, you know, flyers for the school, but it was just every week flyer after flyer after flyer coming in. And I think that's an area that we can combat next time going for the school to our citizens. But I just think everybody worked very hard to get where we're at.
All right, yeah, I guess I don't have much to add, you guys kind of covered what I was thinking. Couple of quick points is, in my opinion, part of a big driver of the fifty-six percent was the flyers, people were so upset by it. So although I found the lies and some of the social media garbage, personal attacks, all of that, what I, what I believe is the community sent a clear message that ethics values are important and that doesn't work. And so what I saw in the last few weeks was the next generation of Sunapeeps that want to be vocal, want to be visible, want to support the schools, were engaged and a lot of them said it was because they were so sick of the flyers and being talked to like they were stupid and thankfully there's a positive outcome because there's a whole lot more faces and a whole lot more activity. So I'm deeply thankful, though I'm mortified by what some of that was, the outcome benefits Sunapee schools and I think the future's even brighter to move forward with plans and discussions and things. So who was writing those and sending them, I don't think you got the effect that you wanted. I'm heartbroken as a taxpayer that we left three-point-one million dollars that could have been put into our elementary school. I just, I'm a taxpayer too and that, I just want that said, that I'm kind of heartbroken on that front for otherwise only positive things to say about our voting. I don't think I've ever seen a school budget passed by that proportion. So with all the rhetoric and noise around the budgeting season, I was just blown away last night sitting in the gym hearing that result. So I think, I appreciate the Sunapee community vote of confidence in our budgeting and management. And then just to finish, these take years and I think a couple of you said, we're at forty or forty-two percent, forty-nine percent, fifty-six percent. There's been lots of municipal projects that weren't at fifty-six percent, the third try in a row. So we're starting at a good place where the community's highly engaged and it reflects the listening the CIP has done to bring forward what works for people and step away from what didn't work. So I think those are, those are my observations. So incredible day for Sunapee schools and during COVID, signing the coworkers, I couldn't believe how many people came out. Sir, there's less than last year, which is a, you know, record amount, but I think we're still higher than our average for an ongoing year. Must have been, I mean, I think we're at nine hundred as an average and we're over a thousand. So thank you to the community and as we move forward from a ranker season, I want us to have, I wish, this is America, you can come to our meetings and say whatever you want, and say whatever you want on social media, I'm asking for us to come together, have differences of opinion productively, limit the name-calling and nastiness, and let's figure this out as a community because unless any of us move, we're all stuck together. So let's work this out, all right? Try to have a positive tone, differences of opinion productively. Do you have anything you want to add?
Just thank you to the board for your efforts in this process. It is not easy and with the measly stipend that you get, you have to endure a lot. Again, I said before, I willingly signed up for this as my profession and I couldn't have think about doing anything else. Just as far as the ballot, I think all of it, I was very happy with fifty-six percent as great, but I was really happy to see the petition of our articles where they were at. The petition of our articles, we know submitted by forty-six, forty-seven people, ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of those names were the same people inside. It was, it was really talking about the board doing something illegal. That was changed in a great process that we have because of SB two, where you get to change warrant articles by citizens in the community, that was done by citizens. Put on the ballot that over a thousand people had an opportunity to respond. And just the outcome of that number, and people wanted you as a board to follow along. I think that's, that's great, that people gave you that tone that, hey, there are laws and we're taking it following. So for me, I thought that was great that that process took place, citizens were involved from the first petition part to the deliver session and then a thousand people were looking. So it was just nice to see that come sort of full circle.
Yeah, amazing, amazing numbers, incredible day at Sunapee schools and deeply thankful for community support. Want to talk about, off topic, tuition process, would you like to take a moment to educate?
I would love to. So in your packet, which was most of your packet this month, is a lot of information regarding tuition. And I want to go through, because the conversation last month started with, I think we should form a tuition committee. And I want to talk to you about a board committee that looks at tuition, and I want to talk about the process that we have in place and then maybe see if I can help redirect to what it is that you're looking for and maybe need more of. So first and foremost, we have our policy, this is a policy that was approved by the board back in two thousand and seventeen. It is a great policy, there's not many like it because a lot of schools don't have a great policy that accepts tuition students. This really, I think, has laid out a great template for our administrators to make determinations that allows parents to clearly understand the process in which we, which you are part of tuition here and including non-residents, conversations from other towns, district employees, and students with special accommodations. So it's very thorough in that regard and it's a great policy. Part of your role as a board is to create such a policy. So we're going to check, we've done that, nice job. The second part of your board, if you go out for the policy you can pack it, you're going to see tuition information. One of your second roles as a board is to set a tuition rate. Maybe you don't have, you don't know this, but if you do not set a tuition rate, the Board of Education, State Board of Education can set a tuition rate for you. So let's say you didn't set a tuition rate and somebody applied for tuition, we said, well, gee, we don't have one. They go to the State Board of Education, the State Board of Education, okay, how about five grand, how about ten grand, how about fifty grand? It takes that control away from you. So check number two, you've done what you needed to do as a board by setting a tuition rate. I'm going to put that aside and then go to some of the RSA just for a minute. So in your packet again, there is lots and lots of information regarding RSA. And it talks about your responsibilities as a school board. As a school board, you've done the two things that you needed to do, you set a tuition rate and you set a policy. If you were to form a committee to talk about tuition, you might be going in an unintended place. So at the school board level, to have a committee to look at tuition, you'd be looking at, as you can pack it, an area agreement, a regional school agreement, or a tuition agreement. And those have much bigger and wider consequences than our current policy and our current tuition brackets. So a regional agreement, we'd like to hear a side of school business. We went, we took schools around us and we said, yeah, we're going to have one big school, it's going to be here, we're going to invite, you show up to schools if you'd like to come, we're going to have you come in here, we're going to set a tuition rate, we're going to all agree, this is how we're going to pay for it, we'll divide that, we did one actually in SAU, forty-three services and how those get paid for, there's some inaccuracies in there based upon formulas and net assessed property value in each town, but that's a regional agreement that the board would set. Then there's an area agreement, somewhat similar, we go, we say, okay, we have the school, we're going to take schools in, we're going to set this rate, they're going to pay us that rate. And you then become the school, the anchor school for those towns that you provided into that regional agreement. Then the situation agreement. And Kearsage, excuse me, Lemon has a tuition agreement with Grantham where they signed on, I think they just signed on for fifteen, forty years. Lemon gets to set a tuition rate, Grantham gets to pay. Grantham doesn't have a seat at the table, they don't get to make a whole lot of decisions, that's why what goes on in those schools, they get a bill and they pay a rate and they agree to pay that rate. That rate doesn't always necessarily include some of the additional costs we'll talk about, but that, that's the rate, you're other schools, so any kid from Grantham, based upon that tuition agreement or area agreement, goes to that school. So those are much higher level conversations around the board because you're not having that with your community, you're having that with another board. And you're really entering into agreements that are going to bring other schools to you or bring you to another school and sometimes in ways that you don't have a lot of control of depending on which side of that weight you're on, how things come and how things go, your ability to talk about curriculum, to set curriculum, they have a school board, you have voices at school boards, those are a lot of, lots of different pieces. When you talk about a board committee, that potentially leads, could lead itself to, it might be misleading to say we have a board committee on tuition. If I heard that, I really think you're thinking of one of those three areas. So yeah, I'm just trying to set the stage for you. We do have, I think, again, a nice policy, we have a great process on how we take tuition students. And I'm going to go back to the piece of this says tuition information. And we have, the schools that are around us, Dosia, Unity, Croydon, and Lebster, the grades that they take in tuition, and the rates that they tuition at. So Dosia, Unity, Croydon, Lebster, give money to those students because they do not have a public school for those kids to go to. And so because of that, you get to tuition. Dosia gives fourteen thousand, six hundred and ninety thousand dollars for rate six through eight, fifty thousand, seventy-nine dollars for six through, for nine through twelve. Unity gives fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars for six through twelve, Croydon, five through twelve, fifteen thousand, one hundred and five dollars, and Lebster, six through twelve, fourteen thousand, five hundred, ninety, twelve, all. Sunapee's common tuition rates, fourteen thousand, K through eight, and nine through twelve for fifteen thousand and nine through twelve. Son of Pea's current tuition rate is fourteen thousand K through eight and nine through twelve for fifteen thousand and nine through twelve. I read somewhere that we weren't attracting elementary school tuition students. Well, if you look above, you see that most, most of these towns around us have elementary schools. And so if you have a school in your town, kids go to that school. There's no need for that town to pay tuition. The parent could tuition on their own, but the town's not paying that tuition. When you don't have a public school in your town that has the grade levels, then you get to offer tuition. And so that's why the majority of our tuition students are in grade six through twelve because that's where they're coming from, from those sending towns. Our employee rate, and so we give our employee rate, one quarter of the tuition rate. So in K through eight, it's thirty-five hundred and nine through twelve, it's thirty, three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. You might say, wow, that's a pretty good deal. It is a pretty good deal. It's a great deal for us. Because those faculty members that are now here at three fifteen, instead of going home to their town in Andover or over to New London or back down to Concord, they're staying here, they're coaching, they're in our extracurriculars, they're putting extra time in for school and after school with our kids. And that's great, then that we also now brought kids from other communities into Son of Pea, which doesn't have a ton of diversity. But let's say we have a few kids from other larger towns, bringing them into our community to give a different outlook, a different perspective from something that's different from being born and raised solely in Son of Pea. So yeah, that's a, that's a good deal, that's a great deal for Son of Pea. We're going to gain a lot out of having our faculty's children get to tuitioning. And preschool, I don't know if it's too deep, but if you have question for towns here to help me with that, we do also collect tuition money for preschool. Again, I think we've got all these numbers two years ago. I'm going to be rough numbers and terrible to recommend, but eight years ago before we had preschool, we were paying seventy thousand dollars in Newport for three kids. Last year, I believe, or two years ago, we were paying fifty-six thousand dollars to put sixteen kids in preschool. And so it would be a lot more sense to us to bring our preschool kids back, put more kids in the town of Son of Pea into that preschool and offer service to our community. And so we collect a little bit of money through preschool. And I also remember along the way that, how does that happen? Like how do those Dosia, Unity, Croydon and Webster, how do they know? How do our parents know? Well, in the packet, you saw a handout from Dosia and it's a frequently asked questions regarding tuition. And one of the first things on there is it talks about Son of Pea. You know, Vault Seven was why Son of Pea schools was considered, was considered as an anchor school. And then it talks about the Son of Pea rate and the rate coming up for the 2021 school year. And so every year, these towns call us probably around this time and say, hey, we're having our tuition night for our grade five, our grade six parents at our town hall, in our cafeteria. When you send somebody up, our administrators, Jody in the past, Jean's gone, I think Mead gets gone. We send out faculty members, they go up, they sit at the table, we have a nice little sign and they talk to parents about Son of Pea. We bring our program of studies, we bring our handbooks, we bring our annual reports and we sort of do a little, a sales pitch if you will, for folks who are interested in coming to us. And I think that's, that's why kids come with us, right? We have a reputation, we're a great school district, but we go out there and we're like a vendor in an exhibition hall. Hey, we're going to put on some stuff there, we're going to sell ourselves to these communities. And we do a really good job of that. The last piece of tuition that I want to talk about that, we haven't talked about it in a long, long time. So we are a C I S, C I S certified school. And C I S is a student exchange visitor information system through the federal government. And so six years ago, I was trying to attract foreign exchange students to Son of Pea. Part of our struggle over the last four years has been some legislation at the White House sort of slowing that process down of getting exchange students over here. We've had J one, which are cultural exchange students come through Son of Pea. I actually have some requests right now from an organization in Concord that has a rep into London, that have four hundred something students from other countries that are coming over for a J, would like to go over to J one and be placed, not all in our school, but would be interested. If J one's a cultural exchange program, we wouldn't receive tuition money there. They're just coming, they're experiencing for one year, the culture of Son of Pea and American schools more a cultural experience. And kids can do the same and go to other countries and opposite on J one visas and go to other countries if they were to do that. F one students, which is what was certified through C I S, allows kids to come here, us to take tuition money for them and to attend our public school, paying tuition. We have had some difficulty again because of legislation, getting some F one students in place. We have a gentleman who we work with over in New Zealand who's helped publicize us nationally and worldwide about Kamu Sa. We have a video made by the Seamen Project three years ago. It really, I don't know if folks got to see it, it was just talking about who we are as Son of Pea and everything from what we did here in a spirit day, to the mountain, to the lake, to all the different things and great drone shots of our clubs and just all the great activity. Again, the last four years has been difficult with legislation. The toughest piece of legislation for our F one tuition kids and why really it's a disadvantage for us in public schools. So Carnegie Mountain, right down the road, they take tuition kids. Carnegie Mountain, a private school in the United States, can take F one students for four years. Public schools in the United States can only take F one students for one year. So if I was official Brady, you go there for four years. If you went to Concord High School, you can only go to Concord High School for one year. So part of that is that we've, and I've tried to help with the national legislation to change that, to balance that. Maybe with the new administration in the White House, we'll be able to make a few more improvements there. But that has definitely limited us as a public school for getting students. Now we keep trying, our name's out there and we continue to be registered through the federal government to accept F one students. I'm hoping that if you take some J one students, that potentially may lead to some more F one students. So again, another avenue of tuition through Son, through our school. Finally, and I think it's a handout that's on your, that's on your table. Dosia, I got this yesterday, Dosia gave us what they're paying out. And so I thought, well, we're not charging enough. How come we're not charging what they're giving? Well, you know, they're giving fifteen seventy-nine and Newport is charging that. But where are the second highest tuition costs for the town of Dosia? All those other farm ops and Webster, those are all lower tuition costs. And so I think we have a good price point right now. We think it's going up based upon the email that we received, maybe a hundred dollars in nine through twelve. So we certainly can try to adjust. But we ought to make sure that if we adjust up to, say, fifteen-two and Dosia's only given, excuse me, Unity's only given fourteen-two, are we going to be able to still take those couple of kids that want to come in from Unity? The last piece I think is really, really important. And it goes back to sort of area agreements, it goes back to tuition agreements and anchor schools. If you were to go out as a board, form your committee, say, we're looking at area agreements, tuition agreements, and we would like to go in with Dosia and Webster and Unity. And you make that agreement, you now become that school. And so I've heard, you know, we've said all along, if we can gain enough kids, we can help lower our cost per pupil. We showed, we showed that statistic for years. And what happens when we go on thirty kids, we can drop that statistic. That's right. And we try to do that by our process of tuition, putting kids in our schools that will fit and be successful and be part of the culture and the climate of our current buildings. In an area agreement, tuition agreement, all those kids now, because you let the anchor school come. And so you may need a hundred fifty kids, rate, okay, our cost per pupil is nothing on that. Maybe not. Because by taking all those kids, you may need to add staff and you may not have programs based upon the needs of those kids that we currently have in place that you now need to put in place. And the money you receive in tuition may not offset the cost of those programs in addition to staff. So I hope I frame that in a way that I think what you're looking for as a board, isn't a committee. I think that you're looking for more information.